God of love, God of care, God of mercy. Thank you for your compassion. Thank you for providing to all of us everything that we need. Thank you for the people of Perry that continue supporting the community, the school system, the fire department, the police department, and the other systems that are important to the well-functioning of the community and its surroundings. Thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunity that now the council has to have conversation, to hear each other's voices, include the voices of the community in the planning, in the visioning, and in the hopes for the goals that all together want to accomplish. We celebrate the accomplishments in the past. I also look forward into realizing dreams that are still in the process of developing and coming true. We thank you for everything that you are and for everything that you have been and for everything that you will be in your creation. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Ray. Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Sorry, the game got canceled, but Glenn, you're here.
That's all right.
Did you get your check? Do you want to get that? He can dial it down and then shut the shutter for right now, I guess. Yeah, because I'm a bull for once we go to it. Bob Porter, Bob Porter, Bob Porter. Yeah. We'll give him another minute. It works every time. We always giggle when you come in because I've always just said your name two times.
Do a mail kiss?
Seems to work, so.
I'm letting you off, I was not coming.
We know. Chad checked his phone. Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take roll call, please? Mike Connel.
Here.
Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Galavie.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Neersu Lehman.
Here.
All of the county for nice. And we have a special meeting called by the Planning Commission with our council meeting tonight, so I'll ask their chair to take roll call for the Planning Commission.
Okay, I'll act as the chair this evening. Forrest Whitson. Steve Wallace.
Here.
Nick Jones. Genevieve Cutrell.
Here.
Babat Ki. And myself, Larry Lambert. We have a portion here other than Forrest Whitson, Nick Jones, and Babat Ki. We are down one member, as I believe we'll speak about later tonight.
So you don't have a quorum, so you don't have a, you don't have to worry about, I mean, so your meeting has been canceled due to lack of quorum. Okay?
Thank you.
Looking for approval of our agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted and asked for it.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, which was October 6th.
I hope that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the October 6, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving into our pre-approved reports. Chad, this is your time to report on the Perry's Pride and put your best face forward, winner's fracture.
All right. Thanks. So the winner of the Perry Pride Resident Award goes to Rick Lewis. He lives at 309 Keeney Street. If I can have him come up here, please. There you go, sir. Thanks.
Good job, man.
And then put your best face forward. Award goes to Thomas S. Bridges, Attorney at Law.
He's too ordinary to come.
We wouldn't recognize you any other way.
There you go, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We now will hear from Julia Turnbull, who is a representative from MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. She's giving us the city's RRC, which is Redevelopment Ready.
Community.
Community Report.
Very good.
All right. I'm going to open up the chair.
I got it.
Thank you.
Get out of the way. Is it pretty good for everybody?
Well, thank you all so much for having me here this evening. I'm excited to be here. I've introduced myself a couple of times, but I'll go ahead one more, just in case anyone missed it. My name is Julia Turnbull. I am a senior community planner for the Redevelopment Ready Communities Team at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. So all those fun words. I'll refer to Redevelopment Ready Communities as RRC very often, so you'll hear that. And then Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC. So those, if you hear those, that's what I'm referring to. But at any point during the presentation, if you have questions, feel free to raise your hand, ask me. I can stop at any point. There'll be time at the end to, I or I'm here, can give the answer as well. Or if you think of something later, Megan has my contact information, and I can always be in touch about that as well. So I am here today because Perry is engaged in the RRC program. And the next step in our process is to be formally evaluated. So there's been a little bit of rigmarole for Region 6, which is where Perry is located. In terms of planners, we had a planner who was in place, who then took on a new position and handed it over to another planner who took on a new position. So now we have me. I normally serve sort of the west side of the state, Regions 4 and 8, so Midwest to Southwest Michigan. I live in Grand Rapids. So just prefacing this with, I will not be your permanent planner. We are in the midst of hiring and have applications out to new community planners for MEDC. And so with that, hopefully, before the new year, we'll have someone in a permanent position. So they will be your main contact. They'll be new, but there's three others of us who are, who have been here for a little bit and do the role. So just want to preface that with, you'll have kind of contacts going forward. And I am 31 weeks pregnant, so I might go on maternity leave before that even, so we'll see. So bear with us. But hopefully, this will be a great place for you to be able to start working forward, and you won't need too much of your RRC planner quite yet. So this is kind of just giving a brief overview of RRC in general. So Redevelopment Ready Communities really empowers communities to shake their future by building a foundation of planning, zoning, and economic development best practices and integrating them into their everyday functions. So RRC is a voluntary technical assistance program available to any community throughout Michigan. So as you're engaged, you have chosen to forward in this, in this process. And there's lots of different things that we will look at for the best practices, which I will get into. So looking at RRC as a comprehensive toolkit, there are two different pathways a community can take in RRC. Perry has chosen the Essentials Pathway. The intent is assist communities in facilitating predictable development experience. There's opportunities for, you know, having RRC resources, training, some technical assistance match funding, which I'll discuss later as well. The other pathway, just so you're aware, is the Certified Pathway. The intent is assist communities in facilitating predictable development experiences and in proactively seeking out redevelopment projects. So the difference between the two, the Essentials Pathway doesn't have as many criteria or even best practices as the Certified Pathway. It's really a great foundational sort of path for communities, especially communities that might have a lower capacity or who are really looking to kind of dive in and start their RRC experience. I have lots of communities who are pursuing Essentials with a long-term goal of pursuing certification, but kind of are looking to get that first designation under their belt and then as capacity allows, potentially pursue full certification. So these are the RRC six guiding principles, which I'll kind of just run through really quick. It's really community-driven. While these are six best practices that we kind of implement throughout the state, we want it to be community-driven, and we want it to be unique to your community and work for you. It's not helpful if it's a plan that you create that sits on a shelf. It really has to be something that's being implemented in your community and really fits with your vision and goals. The other is predictable. This really looks at the ease of, for potential applicants, being able to find and comprehend development standards and expectations. That is, both helps them have a good point of view of the city or community and helps them launch, potentially come back or invest. Implementable. The principle applies to both how a community approaches planning and in how RRC seeks to integrate the best practices locally. Locally. Proactive. Being proactive helps secure opportunities that might not otherwise occur. Equitable. Integrating RRC best practices into local processes can make it easier for local investment and more prosperous communities in which we all thrive. And then collaborative. RRC aims to capture momentum, to collaborate with both traditional and non-traditional community and economic development partners. This is collaborative also within the community. It sometimes is hurtful if one person is really solely focused on RRC and then potentially they move on to a different position, and then no one really knows what's happening. So it's good, too, to remain kind of in the loop of what's going on, especially as things are implemented, you know, having that brought forward to council just to be in the know of what sort of plans and whatnot are being put into place. So Redevelopment Ready Communities Best Practices. There are six best practices in total. So five of them are for, or the six best practices technically what we consider appendix best practice. For those pursuing full certification, once they reach full certification, they work with our Redevelopment Ready Sites team to help with packaging priority sites once they reach full certification. That's not a benefit of reaching full Essentials Pathway since there are some key items in the Certified Pathway that aren't a part of Essentials that are completed in order to get there. You'll also see Best Practice 5 is a certified-only best practice. So as a community pursuing Essentials, that's not a best practice you'll have to look at at this time. That's economic development and marketing. The other four best practices are really where you're going to be spending a lot of your time and where we'll get into, kind of going through each one specifically. You'll see there are some of the best practices that are under the Essentials that might say not applicable. There are some even under before that are considered certified-only best practices. So that's something you won't have to worry about at this time, pursuing Essentials. All right, so let's take a closer look at our best practices. So Best Practice 1 is Plans and Public Engagement. So why is this something we have? Foundational plans are the key first step in realizing a community's redevelopment vision. So for instance, adopting a master plan every five years, having a downtown or border plan for Essentials. This is only applicable if you have an active DDA or CIA TIF, which I'll get into in a second. I know the community does not have that, so it wouldn't be applicable. Adopt a capital improvements plan annually, and then adopt a public participation plan. So here is a little snapshot of Perry and the recommendations that were provided for the community based on these best practices and the expectations, which are outlined as well in a lot more detail within your baseline report. So as I mentioned before, for Essentials level, this best practice, or the downtown plan only applies in instances where the community has an active DDA or CIA TIF. It's been indicated that you do not have that, so that is one you won't have to worry about unless you pursue full certification. For Master Plan, the only piece of this is creating a supplementary implementation plan with responsible parties and timelines for goals and objectives and actions within the plan. So really creating kind of a matrix and who's going to take care of what and where are you looking at. And that's something that we can work with the community to help kind of provide examples and build out. Capital improvements Plan. We ask that you, you know, annually create and adapt a six-year capital improvements plan. The six years is dictated by the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. They look at the current year at plus five at least, and it has to be updated annually. And then Public Participation Plan. I'll work with the RRC team to create a public participation plan and toolkit. We have expectations and kind of that are outlined in our Best Practices Handbook as well. That kind of goes through different areas that we're looking at, like identifying stakeholders and identifying proactive engagement opportunities where you're sort of aligning with those different pieces. Best Practice 2. So this looks at zoning. So why is this? Zoning is integral in to implementing the community's redevelopment vision. So these are the different categories we really look at. Ensuring the master plan has a zoning plan. Add user-friendly components to the zoning ordinance. Allow mixed-use by right. Integrate placemaking, diverse housing, flexible parking, and green infrastructure provisions into the zoning ordinance. So green infrastructure is one that is a certified level only for this best practice. So isn't something you would have to look at at this time. And Perry is doing really well with zoning. We are fully aligned on Best Practice 2 at this point. For Essentials, I'm not sure where it's a certified level. If that's something you pursue that might change. But at this point with Essentials, you are fully aligned, which is great. Best Practice 3 is Development Review. So why does streamlined development review process fully encourage redevelopment in the community? This includes having clear development review processes outlined in the zoning ordinance, ensuring the community's website has all relevant information for applicants to navigate the development review process, and then sharing internal review policy and procedures. So here, Perry is doing really well for the majority of these best practices with having defined processes, identifying your point of contact, having internal review processes, etc. We look at conceptual review meetings. So conceptual review meetings would be something that happens before a site plan is completed, before any type of development review money might be spent. This is really more of an informal ability for an applicant to meet in just very preliminary, get some information around conceptual review meeting or about the process, and also has staff, or gives staff the ability to kind of hear that preliminary idea and offer feedback at the beginning rather than once money's spent and plans are built out and it's a lot harder and more frustrating to change at that point rather than right at the beginning. You can also walk them through the redevelopment process so they really have a good understanding. And then this should be a free meeting availability for the community, which we're looking to have advertised on your website somewhere, notifying that that is an available option. And then the final is access to information. For Essentials, this looks that a lot of these things in the development review process are online, and the majority of them are. The only thing that's left is conceptual review meetings. So this is a easy twofer where if you complete one, you complete the other. Best Practice 4 is Boards and Commissions. So well-prepared boards and commissions ensure smooth development review processes. This looks at clear recruitment and orientation processes with detailed expectations for interested members. Share bylaws or rules of procedures for boards and commissions. Issue an annual planning commission report. Develop comprehensive training strategy. Hold an annual joint review meeting. So 4.7, which is the joint review meeting, is a certified-only expectation, so not something you have to worry about at this time, but always good to look into as you are pursuing. And looking at where the community is currently at. So 4.1, Recruitment Process. This really is expectations outlined that you would have a board and commission application available on your city website. If you have one already, that's great. It just needs to be uploaded online. It can be a very simple application, but whatever that process usually looks like, that should be available online. Expectations and interests. For Essentials, this looks that the board and commission expectations are outlined on the website. This can be done in a variety of ways. I have communities who will create individual pages or have individual pages for each board or development-related board and commission, and then we'll put expectations, expectations like meeting times and, you know, just kind of those general explanatory items, especially for someone who might be interested in joining but really doesn't know what the time commitment's going to look like or even really what this position is. Kind of just giving a brief overview for that. Orientation packets has been identified in the line. Bylaws. 4.4, Develop and Adopt Bylaws for the Planning Commission and then zoning for appeals. If you already have them, that's great. You just ask that they're all available online in a local location as well. And then 4.5, Annual Planning Commission Report. Create an annual planning commission report each year. This is actually also dictated by the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, which asks for a planning commission to create an annual report. On our RRC library, which I'll get into a little bit more in a minute, we do have templates available, tons of examples that kind of showcase different things that you can outline on a planning commission annual report. So this is something great with the 2022 year coming to an end quite soon. In that first quarter of the 2023 year, this is something planning commission could look at putting together for RRC and then something that will need to happen annually. 4.6 is Training Strategy. So create a training plan for development-related boards and commissions and update every other year as needed. So the training strategy really is going to look at some priority needs that might be beneficial for training. This isn't necessarily the, you know, eight-to-five training that someone has to take off work and go to Lansing and spend a whole day. This looks at even integrating training in a variety of ways, such as, you know, articles in your council packets or commission packets that staff or someone identify as potentially good for training or just better understanding, especially if there's something specific you're looking at as a community or looking to implement. It's really helpful if you're able to kind of integrate small training opportunities for understanding. If you're, you know, talking about ground bills or you're talking about diverse housing options, things like that. There are lots of quick reads out there that are a lot easier to kind of integrate rather than finding a large-scale training and dedicating the time to it. So those are the best practices and kind of where the community is at. I mentioned the RRC process before, but this is kind of an overview for you. At this point, you have now completed the third step, or that baseline evaluation has been delivered. And now if we run to Best, or Step 4, Incorporating Missing Best Practices. So this really is now going through your reported findings and the expectations and kind of starting to integrate them as makes sense and I'll start aligning with the RRC process, our best practices. How we do this is through our online Trello board. If you've never used Trello before, it is a free kind of task manager system, which has, which I think at its heart is checklists and to-dos, which we've kind of manipulated to work for progress reporting for RRC. This has been really beneficial in succession planning. So if there's turnover on the municipal side, turnover on the MEDC side, which seems to be happening quite a bit for Region 6 at this moment, all communication, documentation, information that has been uploaded into Trello will stay there so anyone who has access to the board can kind of pick up where it's left off rather than searching through all the emails and trying to figure out who said yes to what or where you turned something in. That'll hopefully alleviate any of those issues. And then those who are on your Trello board will really be the people who are actively turning things in for RRC to the RRC planner. The next would be once you achieve your designation, Essentials, and then maintaining the designation. There are just a couple annual items for Essentials, specifically the Capital Improvements Plan, the Planning Commission Annual Report, and then the Training Strategy, which is bi-annual. So those three would just, each year, we kind of re-check up with the community once they've reached their designation, see how things are going, if there are any large-scale changes to the RRC best practices, which hopefully will be happening. We have a very large, what we call RRC 2.0 change back in February of 2021. So I think we're pretty solid with where we're at right now, which is great. But anything like that. And then once you achieve a designation, you are good for five years, and then we do a renewal process just to make sure that we have all the annual items and the community is still up to date with everything and still interested in continuing to pursue their designation. All right, some benefits of Redevelopment Ready Communities Best Practices. So a locally-driven streamlined development review process is really that sort of more internal, kind of you're planting seeds to see it grow better benefit. Can you think of the word benefit? That communities are able to see more on a long-term basis. As you create a document, a lot of communities will even find that they create something, and then all of a sudden, the next year, they're like, wow, we actually tried implementing that. And that was, that actually wasn't a great document. Let's just update it and figure out a better way to utilize this, you know, and how it works for you with it. Create a document, and it immediately really works. So these are meant to be, you know, evolving with the community. You know, first draft might not always be the best fit, especially if it's something new you're implementing. But that gives you a kind of foundation to move on and create something that really is going to continue to benefit the community. So we have ongoing technical assistance and support from the RRC team. So in this So in this technical assistance form, your RRC planner can assist you with even some creation of documents if you're having a really hard time or are looking for them to either help create, help with a draft, or also that third-party review. Everything that's in draft form, you can turn in on the Trello board. We will review, make sure it's meeting RRC best practices if we see any concerns, things like that. There's also technical assistance match funding available. So as a community pursuing Essentials, there is up to $30,000 of technical assistance match funding. So $30,000 or 75% of project, whichever is less. And you can, once you start implementing some of the best practices on your own, now that you're evaluated, you do have access. So say you wanted to review and update your master plan. You wanted to do a zoning ordinance rewrite or update, you know, different sort of items that might help you specifically meet the best practice, meet a specific best, one or more best practices. That is what that technical assistance funding is available for. And you would work with your RRC planner right from the beginning. When you had an idea for a project, contact your planner and say, hey, we're thinking, we want to do a master plan update. We'd like to hire a consultant. We'd like to apply for technical assistance funding. It's a direct grant to the community, and there is a process that goes along with it that's not too cumbersome, but we just, the RRC planner will walk you through it as you were applying. The next is well-positioned for community-driven development, which is great, especially with implementing your development review process. Perry is already in a really great place with a lot of things. I believe the report says you're about 55% completed with Essentials at this point, which is great. So over halfway there already. So I think this is going to be a great opportunity to fine-tune your processes, but then also kind of reach that designation, hopefully at a good pace. So you can reap those benefits as well. The final one is for certified-only, which I mentioned before, which has access to the redevelopment services team. We won't worry about that one yet. If you pursue certification, that is something you'll be able to look at. And that's really all I have for me. I know I've got a lot of information for you all. These are just some different social media things you can look at. Myplace.org has all the information around RRC training, if you wanted to ever take our online training, or our handbook, which has basically every best practice and every expectation laid out for it, which is also translated onto the Trello board, so.
Ready for questions?
Yeah.
One of the questions, a few questions that I've got. One is, understanding when we started, before the best practices or baseline report was done, our council had to pass a resolution to engage. Is there something else? I thought I read someplace that now, since we've got the baseline report, is there another formal resolution or document or anything that the RRC is looking for from?
Council?
From council?
Great question. So we've actually just stopped having to do that. Previously, when we implemented that, we were having a pipeline of like 20 communities. So baseline reports to get to a community were taking almost a year or so. And so because of that, we wanted to, once they got, once the council actually received their report after engaging, we wanted to make sure they were still invested, because there might have been turnover or changes in the municipality or in the boards and commissions. So since our turnaround for the baseline report is a lot sooner, rather than, you know, in every few months having to do another resolution, we've decided to no longer do that, but good question, so.
Next question. You look at the example plans in particular. You look at the baseline report. We're unfortunately flaming red when it comes to the master plan. Planning Commission has already consented that we need to embark on improving that. Some of us have served on the Planning Commission as well. Some of us have looked at some of the model plans on the RRC website, and I noticed that most of them have had some technical assistance beyond the RRC. There's a couple of companies that, you know, come out repeatedly as premier, if you will. Any thoughts in terms of engaging one of those, without naming the name of the particular company? And also, do you have any flavor for what the costs are and what we would have to do to be able to access some of the funding that you spoke of?
Yeah. So the majority of the community is, what they'll do is, kind of looking at that process, they'll do a brief overview, but then we have, on our myplace.org, there's a whole internal guide around the process. But the first step will be to be deemed initially eligible, which just looks that the community has made some progress on their own. It doesn't have to be large scale. It can be, you know, smaller, lower-hanging proof, but just that there's some community investment before we do technical assistance funding. One or two best practices have been completed. From there, when the community's given the initial thumbs up, good to go, you can then issue a RFP, request for proposals. So a lot of communities will find that, you know, it's not necessarily, we don't, we don't select a consultant for you, it's from you. Sometimes you might have, you know, consultants in the area that you might send your proposal to specifically to see if they want to submit. Otherwise, you'll kind of find that certain ones are applying everywhere, especially if they have a larger capacity, because then they can take on more plans at once, that kind of thing. So we can give you, once during that process, your RRC planner can give you some ideas, not necessarily recommending one over another, but some planner or some consulting offerings that we've worked with around master plans, that in-contact information if you wanted to directly assign your RFP to that consultant. And then you would, you were able to select whomever you would like from the list. Cost-wise, it really does vary. I would say $30,000 to $40,000 is pretty typical that I, that I see just off the top of my head thinking. I just, I think the last master plan I did was for Ben Harper, and there was almost like $150,000. So I'm trying to not believe that. But yeah, so that, I would say that's around. And so then that would look at 75%, up to $30,000 would be the technical assistance funding option. And this could be something that, you know, as easily as you can put a few best practices and want to start the process, I could even, you know, get started on that initial eligibility. And you start moving forward, especially if it's a priority kind of right now and you want to get moving on it. And so then, once you selected your consultant, and we have sort of the scope and the budget and the timeline sort of established, we have one more form to have you fill out, which kind of goes more into what our legal team will lead, authorized signers, where to transfer funds, that kind of thing. And then we do the official ask for the RRC team, and we do initial eligibility and official asks every Monday. So we would take it to the team, and if they didn't see any issues, which master plans are pretty straightforward. I would even say, you know, we have some communities who incorporate other things. So even though you don't have an active DDA TIF, that is something, you know, you could always incorporate a downtown plan chapter into your master plan as a part of those expectations and then meet that, you know, meet that. So should you pursue certification later, it's not something that would have to come up. Or in case you just wanted to do a downtown chapter, things like that as well. So yes, I would say 25% of whatever the final cost is, but you can select whichever consultant makes the most sense and will work best with your community based on the scopes you receive. Is that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
I'm not sure if you're familiar with who the members of the planning commission are who are here. It might help you to know. Larry mentioned he is a council member, but also on the planning commission. Steve Wallace is also on the planning commission. Genevieve Petral, she is on the planning commission. Megan, who you talked with, who you've been, she's our treasurer, but she is part of the group that has been doing the Trello board, answering the questions, doing all of that. She's not on the planning commission. I think that's it.
Yep.
Right? Yeah, any other questions? Get out of your hair.
So I have one question on it.
Yes.
How long can we be in, in the section of not actually getting certified? Can we always be in that state if we wanted to be?
Yeah.
That's totally up to us.
Yeah. Or you're saying you've reached Essentials and then the next step of certification? Or just engaged pursuing?
We just got into Essentials, and how long can you be at that level before you would move on to?
So if you, say, you're engaged and then you reach Essentials, you could never choose to pursue certification. That's totally fine. Just continue to maintain your Essential status, and that is perfectly fine.
Okay.
Yeah. And then there's no?
It's not what we want, but I just figured I would know. Because you just never know. And the biggest thing is, right now, we have very proactive elected officials as planning commission, and sometimes I can change drastically. So if we at least begin it and they're not comfortable to go to that certified stage, we've at least accomplished it, and it's not going to hurt us that we could change our mind and then pursue it later, go certify.
Exactly. And even if you're, you know, pursuing certification, you still maintain that Essential status. It doesn't mean you go back to engaged and because you're now pursuing certification, you'll always be an Essential community as long as you maintain those annual pieces and the best practices. And then, once you reach certification, you would just move on to that next level and kind of unlock some additional technical assistance and offerings like that, like the redevelopment services team and things of that nature. But yeah. And then for engaged, even, there's no timeframe that we say you are now engaged, you have three years, or you're at nothing like that. You know, we understand priorities shift, things change. I mean, we just had a global pandemic. I never saw that coming. That really slowed people down. So yeah, so we, there aren't really no timeframes that we're looking at. As long as you maintain communication with your RRC planner and they reach out, even if it's just every couple of months to say, we haven't really had time. We've been putting out fires in different locations, haven't had time to work on stuff. That's perfectly fine. Just maintain that open communication.
Anyone else have questions for Julia? She has to drive back to Grand Rapids, so I think we'll let her go.
Awesome. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
We do have time for a public comment on our agenda now. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward? Yes, you can step up to the podium and just tell us who you are and what's on your mind.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name's Mark Zaccarda, and I'm a candidate for our 71st State House District. So I've been attending lots of meetings, city meetings, township meetings. Just want to drop in, kind of introduce myself here as I seek to represent this whole district here in the State House. So like I said, Mark Zaccarda, I want to say a little bit about the district here, if you weren't familiar. So we had the census, now we've been redistricted. It's a little bit different than the old 85th district, which is what we're in now. So the new 71st, which will start next year, is most of Chiawasi County, but not Woodhall and Scioto. So that goes with the 75th district off to the southwest. So all the rest of Chiawasi, then a sliver of Saginaw County, three townships there, including Oakley and Chesapeake. And then, I'm driving a lot. And then a good chunk of southwestern Genesee County, so Argentine, Gaines, and a good portion of Mundy Township. It goes kind of along 69, Swartz Creek, almost to the airport, and so that whole corner of Genesee. So a little bit about what I'm trying to strive for here, if I am honored to be able to serve in the State House, and that's the biggest thing, you know, jobs, local economy. Of course, you know, just like we're talking about here tonight with the economic development. You know, we all see what's happened to some of our cities and towns, most of our cities and towns in a rural area like this, really been hollowed out. You know, manufacturing is left here. I'd like to see some manufacturing come back from places like Mexico and China that have been outsourced, so that people have those opportunities. A big thing is like, you know, I'm sure if I, if we polled people here, who knows any family who hasn't had a young person move to a different state? Probably everyone here knows somebody in that circumstance. And I would like to have our economy better so that young people, of course, if you want to leave, great. But if you want to stay near where you grew up, you ought to be able to have an opportunity to make a good living here in a, in a, in a local job. Of course, I'm a farmer. I didn't include that important part. So I grew up on a farm in Over. Was a dairy farm, now the cows are gone. Now we just row crop farm. So I was a high school biology teacher for four years in Virginia, because I couldn't find a teaching job in Michigan at that time, great recession. But yeah, so I've been back here for 10 years and working on the farm with my mom and dad. So of course agriculture is another pillar of my campaign. I want to make sure we're supporting ag, especially family farms, small farms. It's increasingly hard for young people again to get into agriculture. You know, if your family doesn't have an existing farm, it's very difficult to be able to do that. Of course, also being a teacher, I'm an interest in education. I want to make sure our schools are properly funded, teachers, students are supported. And then my final pillar is just kind of like, you know, responsible democracy. You know, I want to be a true civil servant. A lot of people, you know, they want to spit on the ground when you mention government to people, and sometimes they have good reasons for that. But a lot of times, we do have people who don't, who are in elected positions, who don't really act as civil servants. You know, we've had instances of self-dealing and cronyism, and that's something that I find repulsive and that I, one of the reasons why I've decided to try to run, to serve my community and be somebody who is working for the people here, who's looking at everything and thinking, is this good for the people of the 71st House District? So transparency, integrity, being responsive to voters, those are all things that I want to make sure that I do. I have a few cards that I will leave in the back here when I take off, website, votemargazie.com. So I appreciate giving me a few minutes here to speak, and I appreciate all you guys for serving in your important capacity as local officials, because that's something that's often, you know, unsung and not really recognized by the community, but an essential part, and sometimes hard to get people to be able to do that. So thank you. And if anybody had any questions, I'll shut up otherwise.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Zaccarda? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to make any comments at this time? Do we need to adjourn the planning commission since they didn't have a form? Planning Commission members, I will just mention, if you so choose to leave now since your necessary part of the meeting is over, you can go, or you're welcome, more than welcome to stay. That goes for you, Julie Land. Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate that. Moving on in our agenda then to communications. I believe Devon has some things for us.
I have an email from Zach Vince. Dear Mayor Hammond, City Clerk Devon Miller, and all Planning Commission members, I regret to tell you that I have to resign from the Planning Commission effective today. Due to the time constraints and schedule conflicts, this is because I decided with my wife's blessing to return to a full-time position now that our daughter is over a year old. We are in the process of hiring a nanny for her. My wife is very involved with her career and with having a young baby, a real ham, too. We have already been stretched thin for time prior to me returning to work, especially when one of us gets sick. I apologize for any inconvenience. I can tell you that I've enjoyed my time in the Planning Commission and getting to know each of you. I'll miss working with you all, and I wish everyone the best. And P.S., he's returning his items. Sincerely, Zachary V. Mueller. And he did return his stuff, Planning Commission members, today to me, so that was good. I congratulated him, and he said, is there anything I need to know? And I said, no, go. But I still congratulated him. This is all a good thing for this family, I understand that. And then I wanted to share something sweet that happens in our office. On a regular basis, regular meaning it could be six months. I'm not going to say the name of the resident, because I don't have the permission to give that out. It's October 8th, 22, Saturday morning. Dear people of City Hall, I found in the mailbox yesterday a nice envelope full of stamps. I was very pleased to get them. Thank you very much. I reach 96 years on the 27th of June. I think that stamp collecting has helped me to reach this age and card playing. I belong to a senior club, and we play euchre twice a week, Monday and Thursday. I have fun there. Sure, sure has cooled down from a month ago. Again, thank you. I'll use many of those stamps for my albums. Sincerely, anonymous. I just want to let you know, we have the girls in the office, previous ones, current ones. We have the pleasure to become friends, and we call them our neighbors, our work neighbors. And this one, I actually got ahold of Maureen, and she was our accounts payable way back. to try to figure out when this neighbor bonded. They believe it was when Nancy Manor was still with us, it started into the trade. So what our neighbor would tell us is that anytime we get an envelope in with a stamp, he would ask us to save it. So we see the flag over and over and over again. But because he's a stamp collector, he's like, a lot of them are unique. There's been errors and that's where they're worth something. So he would take any stamps we have. So we have this little bucket that anytime there's a stamp on it after we've opened the envelope, we do it. He gives us stamps that are extra in his collection and we mail them to him. And in return, when they lived here, him and his wife lived across the street and we gave him stamps and he, when it would rain, he would get our worms. So that pavement out there, as soon as it was, he loved to fish. So as soon as it would do rain in the morning, he would come in and he was picking the worms. And then when his garden, he would always share his fresh veggies with us. So his wife became ill, they moved in 2015. She passed away last year. And so I just, I just love that he makes a point. He writes us, we collect. We don't get as many stamps like we used to because everybody's doing automated stamps. And I just think it's a beautiful story. We have another neighbor that has moved away and still comes and sees us. And he had, he has low sugar. And so we used to be his babysitters when his wife would be out of town. And if he didn't contact us by nine o'clock, we literally walked in his house and said, are you okay? And so our job is kind of neat. We are not consumers, we're not the bigwigs. We actually get to care about our neighbors. And he's, I just think it's really neat. It's 2022 and we're still in communication with one of our neighbors. And he talks to all of us. So anyways, that's all. I'm sorry it took your time, but I think it's a good story.
Thanks for sharing that with us.
Good story.
Yes, very good. Good reminder for us to be good neighbors. I don't have any report for tonight. Do we have committee reports for tonight?
Just a reminder that the ordinance committee is continuing to meet and our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November the 2nd at 10:00 a.m. Here in council chambers, we're continuing to work on reviewing and updating as appropriate our ordinances and matter of fact, that later on the agenda, we'll be reviewing one of those updates.
Thank you. Any other committees report? Presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Sir.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Under old business, Chiawasi tornado, Siren project, I don't have any update from Chief Box regarding that, nor any update from him for grant opportunities for the Siren because they kind of go together. So moving then on to, well, we'll just need to bring those forward. Do no action on them and yeah. Thank you. Onto new business, we do have a couple of appointments. Our first one, Randy Coffey has agreed to serve on the pension committee. Our representative to that, representing local business, was Victor Darling for a long time, but he sold his hardware. So he's no longer a businessman here in town. So he recognized that and has stepped down. And so I contacted Randy as local businessman and he has agreed to do that. He's not able to be here tonight because of a concert at the school that his daughter's in. But I will take this opportunity to appoint Randy Coffey and hope that council will approve that appointment.
I move that we accept and approve the mayor's appointment of Randy Coffey to the pension committee as a local businessperson for a term to expire October 2023.
A second. We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And hooray, hooray, Sharon Wood, who's here with us tonight, has volunteered. She stepped forward to serve on the SADA board, Chiawasi Area Transportation Authority, for a term to expire in October of 2025. So I hereby appoint Sharon Wood to that position and look for council's approval.
I move that we accept and approve the mayor's appointment of Sharon Wood to SADA board for a term to expire October 2025.
Sir.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Devon, do you want to take a minute and swear Sharon in since she's here?
I did.
Oh, you did already?
Only because I wasn't sure if she wanted to stay, so I wanted to get that done before, so that.
So you're all set? Thank you so much for stepping forward. That's wonderful. Moving then on to possible approval for the 2013 Public Act 270 compliance.
So council, I gave you some information. You have a letter from the state which tells our limits to allow to pay for health insurance. And you have the possible resolution. And then I just gave you a chart. This is actuals on top of what the city is doing. And then below, it shows you the comparables. As of right now, according to state allowance, we have $18,127.53 of lead weight at this point that we are not spending according to allowed by the state. So I think we've done very well. Thank you, council, for our health insurance. And we are asking you to consider the resolution to opt out. This has to be done annually. Council has to make a decision on what we will do.
Any questions for Devon or discussion regarding this?
I move that we accept and adopt 2013 Public Act 270 compliance resolution, which requires an annual approval and the city shall opt out of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act ordinance.
Second.
We have the motion from Bob, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving to our possible first reading of the amended ordinance number 367 regarding open burning. Larry, do you want to speak to that at all? Is there anything else you want to mention regarding that before we do the reading?
I certainly can. We took this on as an ordinance committee because the prior ordinance did in fact reference a open burning permit in the first section of the ordinance, which was not a practice of the city. And so that started the journey to revise our ordinance to get compliant with what our business practices currently are within the city. And then it led to this kind of a general cleanup, if you will, of the open burning ordinance. Any questions before we?
I have just, I guess clarification, I think I answered my own question. But if someone wanted to put a pizza oven in or an outdoor fireplace, because I consider that's not considered open burning, right?
You know, there's.
Because it's not, there's kind of.
Recreational burning in reality. Because they do allow, you know, fire pits, it defines the diameter and size and how far they need to be from a structure, so.
But a fight like a pizza oven is contained, but it's not at ground level. So that's all, it was just, it could be, I could be reading into more than what it is. I just want to make sure that I brought it up. You never know, things are, it's popular right now.
They are. I don't see that there's an issue with anybody else that's on the ordinance committee can comment. But I know we did have a discussion about the fact that we were allowing, we did add some verbiage in here in terms of in recreational burning was not allowed to be burned. You know, you just can't take anything and throw it in that three-foot round fire pit and say that I'm recreational burning.
Yeah, I think you did a good job. That was my only thing that popped up is just because I, you know, I do those things all the time.
Anything else? I move the open burning ordinance amendment number 367, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains Perry City Code Chapter 678.03 is hereby repealed and the following is substituted in its place instead. 678.03 Open Burning. A. General rules for burning. One, no open burning is allowed within the city of Perry with the exception of recreational burning as defined in paragraph A.2. Number two, recreational burning. Recreational burning shall be defined as any fire of logs, brush, charcoal, or similar materials around a residence or property which are burned for the purpose of food preparation or recreation or where the materials can be burned or placed at ground level within a containment pit constructed of masonry or steel no larger than three feet in diameter or covering an area not larger than 10 square feet. Recreational burning shall also follow the guidelines listed below. A. There shall be no burning within 15 feet of any existing structure or five feet from any property line. B. There shall be no burning on any paved or concrete portion of any public street or walkway. C. There shall be no burning of any combustible material that creates the emission of smoke or odor in which quantities as to render occupancy of surrounding properties uncomfortable to a person of ordinary sensibilities. D. There will be, excuse me, there shall be no burning of any combustible material that may release a toxic commission when burned, including but not limited to tires, oil, paint, construction lumber slash materials, trash, or rubbish. E. There should be no burning unless it is under the charge or supervision of a person of mature years and discretion. F. There shall be no burning at any time when the wind or weather conditions may create a nuisance or danger of property of any person in the vicinity thereof. G. The preparation of food in or on any commercially manufactured grill shall be exempt from all regulations set forth in this section. However, it is recommended that such containers be laced at a minimum distance of three feet from any said structure. B. Civil liability for cost and damage. One, any person who sets an open fire, which necessitates calling the local fire department or any other fire department, shall pay to the local fire department all costs and charges incurred by the local fire department by reason of calling the local fire department or any other fire department. Two, the city or local fire department may sue in any court of competent jurisdiction for civil damages and may recover such costs and expenses incurred by it from any person who sets such an open fire. Three, payment of cost to the fire department shall in no way relieve such person from liability for any damage caused by such fire. Four, compliance with the guidelines contained in paragraph A. above will not relieve any person from liability contained within paragraph B herein. It is the responsibility of the person who sets the fire and the property owner to ensure proper fire safety and containment. C. Enforcement. The authority for enforcement of this section shall fall under the direction of the local fire department and city police department.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is possible acceptance of the resignation that we heard earlier from Zach.
I move that we accept and grant the resignation of planning commissioner Zach Moore and extend our appreciation for your service.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now let's talk about Christmas, Christmas lighting contest. You'll see Devon has put in your packet an example of what the 2021 motion was in regard to the Christmas lighting contest. You could increase this amount of money, the total amount of money to, gosh, between $400 and $500 and still be within budget, but that's up to you. Just letting you know that. But we do definitely need to set a date because we can't announce it without a date. So discussion regarding the Christmas lighting contest. Devon also suggests that we discuss adding fourth and fifth place. Like I mentioned, possibly increase the monies and set a date. So discussion regarding all those things.
I guess just to level everybody up a little bit, we have had great participation around the city in the past. I've had the honor to help kind of guide the group through, but through town. We use the last year's winners as judges along with any of us from council that are available to participate. Set a, who set a date and time and go through town. And we have in the past had first, second, and third place. One of the things that we talked about and Sue mentioned it afterwards is potentially increasing the number of places that we recognize in addition to honorable mention that we have done in the past. The other is that we consider potentially having a sign up, no charge involved, but ask participants to drop by, see Shirley or somebody upstairs and just get their name and address added to a list so that when they certainly traverse our way through town, that we don't miss anyone that had wanted to be a participant. We've done our best in the past to try to make a circuit and catch every street, but we always run the risk of not making it. And unfortunately, we go down some streets that turn out to be relatively unlit or undecorated. Either they're decorated, people occasionally forget to turn their lights on.
They wouldn't necessarily have to stop it to do that though. They could email, they could call.
Exactly. Any way they can get put on the list. Great point. It did not need to be a direct interaction, but communicate so that we have at least a list to make certain that we didn't miss anyone that wanted to participate. So those are some thoughts. I had jotted down a couple of potential dates that we might consider. I know last year we did December the 7th on a Tuesday. At one time we were announcing it, I believe back when we used to do the light parade, we'd announce it as part of the parade activity. I don't think now that with Christmas fantasy, we haven't necessarily announced it. We've tried to have it in conjunction with one of our council meetings so we could recognize the winners at a council meeting. So I had just jotted down these, or just some thoughts. Either December the 6th, which would be that Tuesday of the same week that we did last year, that would be just ahead of the Christmas fantasy. Or to give people that are late getting their lights up, it still could be included either December 12th or 13th, which is the following Monday or Tuesday, which would be just in advance of our next scheduled council meeting at that time. Thoughts?
Emma, okay, am I assuming that you want to lead the pack again?
Well, I'm, I'm just giving some background, I can. If council wants me to, I will. Obviously, anybody else can volunteer to do it and I wouldn't be offended.
Okay. But you, those dates worked for you that you suggested if you did lead the pack?
They, I did get single focused in my calendar before I picked those dates.
Okay.
But I also tried to be cognizant of Christmas fantasy and council meetings. So no, I wouldn't pick a date and say, I can't do it.
Is Monday the 12th, any committee meetings? Yes, Megan?
That's the day we're hoping to hold our public forum.
Oh, okay. Herbs, okay.
In my opinion, I think it'd be great to do it the seventh still just because it'd encourage people to turn their lights on before everyone's in town that Saturday for Christmas fantasy.
To which hour?
If you have. If you have the contest before Christmas fantasy, when everyone's already in town after dark, they might be able to drive around and see all the houses lit up.
Get them in the Christmas spirit to join in Christmas fantasy kind of thing.
Right.
I know to do it, it only gets one, really one weekend in December for people to put up their lights. So that's the only thing I look at. I don't disagree with your statement, but then everybody's busy.
When is Thanksgiving? Thanksgiving is the 24th.
24th.
A lot of people do put up their lights that weekend, but it is the very next weekend is the first weekend of December.
Correct.
So they'd only have those two weekends. But we could certainly go, you mentioned the 13th as a possibility. That's a Tuesday.
The 13th would be a Tuesday. That would not give a lot of time between then, you know, first day Wednesday morning to contact the winners and invite them to council meeting.
I like the idea of doing it before Christmas fantasy, but I think it just gets people in the Christmas spirit and more likely to engage in the events going on during the evening of the town.
Well, the other thing, having people sign up in some fashion. People that are signing up are probably going to recognize it and decide to sign up, you know, by Thanksgiving time or thereof could certainly gear themselves to be ready by that date of the...
So are we saying if they don't sign up, but they're all decorated, that they wouldn't be chosen, or...
I wouldn't think that we'd want to do that. I would think that we just want to make certain that we don't miss anyone that has put forth...
Anybody that's got their decorations up and their lights on is in the contest, just asking them to register so we don't miss anybody.
We're not going to try to run down every dark street to find the person that may have some lights on.
So we have to be careful with that wording on the sign up and make sure that it stresses, if you don't want to be missed, let us know. But if your lights are on, everybody's being judged. There's just, I don't know. There's going to be play on words on that.
Yeah.
This is what, this, and I don't know if you're thinking the same thing I am, but we have had prior residents just, they're like full into this and furious when they haven't gotten, like, first place. So I would just be concerned, say, they're used to just decorating, didn't, because they're assumed they're looked at. And, you know, I'd just have to be really careful on, you're going to judge everybody, but if you want to make sure that you're in the judging, give us, it's not wrong. I think it's just a play of words.
Yeah, we might even say, especially if you're in a not visible area, you know.
Yeah, we've had people that refused to decorate their house ever again one year because they didn't. So I'm just letting you know that people take this seriously. They really like it. And anyways, well, Megan and I are both looking at each other. So she's been making the flyers, and we'll play on words and get back. Does that sound fair, Megan? We're just kind of bounced up.
It's all...
And then if we do it, would you say recommending it? I mean, November 1st? I mean, literally get Halloween done and start advertising it, or sooner? Because you're going to have a date. You're going to have a time.
I personally don't want to put anything out before Halloween.
Pardon?
I agree.
I personally don't want to put anything out before Halloween.
Yeah.
Christmas before Halloween.
It depends on what's in the store, too.
Everybody's doing it. What's wrong?
Right after Friday for Halloween, there's still, you know, a month, slightly over a month for people to...
Plan.
And most people kind of expect, I think, that if the residents have been here very long, they can expect that we traditionally have done a lighting contest.
Yes.
So it shouldn't come as any great surprise other than the specific date and time.
I'll just let you know, if it's on a Tuesday, I have choir practice at seven, and I have to be there. But that's just me. If it was to be earlier, I don't know what time we're thinking of having it, but I would certainly come and do the tour with everybody and then just go to practice.
I usually do it at seven.
Yes. So are we saying Tuesday, the 6th?
I think that's kind of where the discussion went.
At seven o'clock? So now discussion regarding how many places to award and what shall the budget be? What amount of money or how many places?
I'll toss out a recommendation in the form of a motion right now that we expand and include by total places of winner, first, second, or first and then second, third, fourth, and fifth runner-up positions, if you will. And we historically have done $100 for first place, second, third have been $50 each. And I would suggest that we do $25 each for fourth and fifth place to be caught, caught this into the budget, but it does recognize, because the fact is, anybody that looked at lights, it gets to be real difficult to say that they're out and out to clear winners. It's just an opportunity to recognize a couple more homes.
That seems pretty reasonable.
Small monetary amount.
Yeah.
See, I move that we authorize, what do we end up with here, $250?
Yep.
$250 towards Christmas contest winners and provide awards to first place receiving $100, second place receiving $50, third place receiving $50, fourth place receiving $25, and fifth place receiving $25. And also the judging will take place December 6th at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. That should be fun. And Larry, you're going to head up the caravane?
Unless somebody wants to volunteer to take it over, you're welcome.
I meant to make Larry doing it part of the motion.
We'll reach out to the winners from last year and see what support we have, okay?
Great. And once again, all the council members are willing and encouraged to participate.
It's a fun thing. I did it the very first year I was here. It's nice. Rod and I drove through town. I don't remember when. When I was sick and wanted to go out. So you drove me around town to look at Halloween decorations. I am amazed how many people decorate so much for Halloween. Anyway, it was fun. It exhausted me, but it was fun. Next on our agenda, possible renewal of liability and property insurance.
Again, council, I gave you the whole packet from MML. I'm very pleased how to work with them. I feel that they're comparable. If you look at the back page, it shows you how long we've been with them and the not much big increases. It goes up a little bit, but then sometimes we go in the negative. Those negatives, a lot of times, can implement how many people we have employed to how many claims we have. All of those take effect. Currently, the one that we're on, it's reflecting a lot of it. We had training going on at the treasures department. We had an extra police officer. So I'm assuming with all the changes and things that have worked itself out that next year it should be level or actually another negative again, so... So I propose you to consider staying with MML and authorize the approval of this proposal.
Any discussion, questions for Devon regarding this topic?
At the start, we've gotten some type of a refund, rebate, whatever, monthly over the last few years.
Yep. Yep, and I think if you'll see that on the last page, you'll see we've been getting dividends since 2011. And we're on the high side again this year, $3,859 compared to last year's dividend of $2565. So again, everybody stayed home and didn't get hurt or anything like that through COVID, so they're able to divvy the money back out to us.
I move that we approve payment of city insurance renewal to MML liability, property pool, and allow not to exceed $41,035.
And authorize clerk to sign the agreement.
Second.
The motion by Bob, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any other business that may come before council? Any public comment? I did just think of one thing I did want to tell you all. One of our police officers, part-time Ryan, was involved in apprehension of a drunk driver up on M52 yesterday, late afternoon. And in the process of assisting the county with that, the drunk driver ran into Ryan. On purpose. He was not hurt. No one was injured, but our, one of our police cruisers has a dented-in front grille thing and maybe the radiator. They're not sure. They're going to check that out. So just so you know that. But nobody was hurt, and that's a good thing. Anything else, items to come for our next agenda?
I have three items. Two items are old business, no action taken, Chiwasi tornado sirens project, grant opportunities for siren. And then the third item is possible approval of ordinance number 367, open burning. I will note, if everybody's okay, that we'll be asking agenda item to possibly approve the fireworks. Council needs to override the ordinance, and it also states what you guys need from the pyrotech. So that'll be on the next agenda.
I did forget to bring this up. I apologize. But today, these were mailed out, or you should have got them today, or they should get them tomorrow. This is the park planning survey. On the back is a code here that you can just scan with your smartphone. And it's about a 10-minute questionnaire about the parks. Like, what would you would like to see? Or what would you like to see more equipment be put in the parks? I would highly recommend folks in the city to take this survey so we can get your feedback on the parks. And if you guys have any questions about it, Megan did really great making these cards and sending them out. So I thank her for that. So hopefully, we can get good feedback and get the parks rolling in a good way, so...
What's the deadline?
Uh, November 21st, sorry.
Thank you.
I did it online and found it to be very easy to use and put together very well.
And it was, it was easy to use. My husband's not a computer guy.
And I'm not either.
But when it came, he said, we should do this. I said, well, you should do this. And he said, well, how do I do that? And I said, well, come right over here to the computer, and I'll show you. So I got him started with it, and he did the whole thing. And it didn't even take him 10 minutes, so...
And one...
It's a good thing.
One other positive, when I sat down to do it, I got interrupted and had to leave. And I was right where I left off when I went back. So so many things, timeout, and you have to start all over again, et cetera. This, if you do get interrupted, you can certainly pick right up where you left off.
Yeah. And if you lose your card, just go to the city website, right on the front page. It'll direct you how to fill that out. There's a link, just click on that. And if you need help, call City Hall. Somebody will help you. Anything else? Good meeting. Thank you all. 8:21, meeting adjourned.